And we're live.
The chair notes the time is six o'clock, uh, six oh four. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge and ZBA chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is present, Mr. Craig Meadows.
Here.
Mr. Everard Henry.
Here.
Mr. Philip White.
Here.
And Mr. David Slowbetter.
Here.
Quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Jacinta Williams, planner. I'm, I think Nate Malloy will join us later, as well as Carolyn Murray of KP Law to provide some guidance and assistance. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty three, this meeting will be conducted via remote meetings. Members of the public who wish to observe this meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts general law, chapter forty eight, in article ten, special permit granting authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties of interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff, and they may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and the ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed his questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. If the chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of hearing to file the decision, for a variance, the board has one hundred days from the filing of the variance to file this decision. No que, no decision is final until a written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda, a public hearing on ZBA FY two thousand and twenty five dash zero four, Wayfinders Inc., requests a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty B, to construct a thirty-one unit mixed income rental housing project in a three-story development on fourteen proposed, with fourteen proposed parking spots on the premises of thirty-one Southeast Street, map fifteen A parcel twenty, in the RVC or Village Center Residence zoning districts, and a forty-seven unit mixed income rental housing project in a three-story building with forty-six proposed parking spots on the premises of seventy Beltratown Road, map parcel fifteen C fifty-eight, fifteen C fifty-nine, fifteen C sixty, in the RN and FPC, Neighborhood Residence and Flood Prone Conservancy zoning districts. This matter is continued from our October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Following that, public comment on any matter not before the board tonight and other business not anticipated within twenty-four hours. The first item on the agenda is ZBA FY two thousand and twenty-five dash zero four, Wayfinders Inc., requesting a comprehensive permit for a project at thirty-one Southeast Street and seventy Beltratown Road. Tonight's hearing, um, we have topics as follows. Presentation from both, on both sites from the application selection process and local preference is the second issue. The third is outstanding questions from our last meeting. That includes a rental application, um, we wanted to view a rental application, comparison of inspections from states and other regulatory agencies, exact lengths from each of the run, the BRF to the terminal units and the HVAC roof configuration. The, uh, report on how the neighbors feel about the effect of the lighting plan and the spill under the properties. And lastly, clarification on the areas of photometric plans for both sites where the numbers appear above average, what's the cause of this, what's happening, and are these areas designated crossing or high traffic areas? And following that, to the extent we have time, we'll begin the discussion of the waiver requests associated with this permit application. Uh, do any members of the board have disclosures to make? Mr. Henry, I think you do. Um, you've submitted your Mullins form, right?
I have, yes, and that's just to verify that I, I missed the September nineteenth meeting and I have watched or recorded.
So the, we want to inform the applicant that the members who missed a single session of the public hearing on this forty B application have reviewed all the materials in the missed session and pleaded their certification, which will be filed with the town clerk. According accordingly, Mr. Henry remains eligible to participate in the board's decision on this matter. And I know two other members of the board who have missed a meeting are in the process of doing the same thing. So they will be good for the rest of the, they're good for this meeting and we know it will be good for the rest of the process. Great. The next order of business is to go through submissions since the, um, since our last meeting. And I think the only submission that we have since the last meeting has been from applicant is a sample application form that we received. And, uh, there's a staff submission which includes a revised schedule of hearings on this comprehensive permit and the topics to be discussed, as well as a, uh, a second, um, on general schedule for the ZBA. I don't think there's anything else in terms of submissions that we have to review. Is there, Ms. Williams?
No, but just for the record, I also forwarded the Mullins certification from KP Law, just to put that on the record as well.
Great. All right. So, um, this meeting is to go over two topics for sure, which is the application selection process and local preference. And then we want to get, um, follow up on those remaining questions from our last meeting. And I anticipate that we might have some time and in the interest of trying to move this application along as expeditiously as possible, we'll start the process of reviewing the waiver requests from the applicant. We won't decide on those tonight. Obviously, this is, that process will go on at a later point in time. We may take consensus, um, views, but the official action on these waivers will, will happen at a later date. This will be the time to start that process of reviewing the waiver requests. All right, so Mr. Gruber, or who's going to run through the app, the application process? So application selection process.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Jamie Gruber. Um, here on behalf of Wayfinders seventeen eighty Main Street, uh, in Springfield, Massachusetts. And yeah, we can start out with the, uh, with the application process. I have a couple slides prepared for that and, um, and local preference. So I will share my screen. Okay. Can you all see my screen here?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, so the application process, um, will start, uh, we'll, we'll start, um, approximately seven months before construction completion. Um, we'll start, uh, with our, with our marketing, uh, affirmative marketing begins there. Um, for, um, those, I guess, least likely to apply. Um, six months before the, um, prior to construction completion will, um, issue the application, the information session dates, the application deadlines, the lottery dates, those are all announced six months in advance. And then, uh, in that time period in four month, we, you know, within four months of the construction completion, there'll be information sessions held. Um, typically, there'll be, you know, two or three of those. Um, one of those, um, may, you know, maybe in, um, uh, Spanish as well. Um, the, and then two months ahead, um, there's the, there's the application deadline and, um, the, the qualified applicants will be assigned a number in, um, for, for a lottery. And then one month ahead of the construction completion, around that time, a lottery is held. And, um, and then after that, the, the, um, the purchase, the, the applicants whose numbers were, were chosen in that lottery, um, they'll, you know, there's a process to kind of qualify, um, you know, process the qualified applicants and then the, the residents would move in. Um, we submitted the, uh, sample application form, um, that the applicants would be able to fill out. Um, that's what was submitted, um, for the board's review. Um, the marketing of the units, you know, it typically includes press releases, um, in, in local papers and flyers and brochures on social media, uh, on the Wayfinders website. Um, there's also a housing navigator site that is, um, has, has been developed to list the affordable, um, affordable rental properties, um, in, in Massachusetts that, that are available so that they keep one database and make it, um, easier for residents to find, uh, available, um, affordable housing. And there's also outreach through, uh, uh, other organizations, um, you know, in, in the, uh, in the local areas as well. Um, here's sort of a, a sample flyer you might see. You may have a photo rendering of the property, some, some details as to, um, you know, what, what's included with the rent, um, some information about the, you know, eligibility of applicants and, you know, how they, how they can apply. And then we have a, a small little video here that, that can kind of go as. Can you all hear the audio on this? Can you hear the audio and the video?
Yeah, I can.
When completing your application, be sure to answer every question. If a question does not apply to you, you can mark it not applicable or NA. Do not mark NA over entire sections or pages of the application. Mark each question and each section individually. Please include all of your contact information, address, phone numbers, and email so we can reach you in case we need additional information to process your application. We may also need to contact you with updates to the application, lottery, or screening process. When you submit your application, we date and timestamp it. Your application is then reviewed for completion. If it is complete, it will be assigned a lottery code. If it is incomplete, we will notify you so that you can complete it. This is one important reason to make sure you always include all your contact information on the application. After you submit your application, you will receive a confirmation letter in the mail within thirty days. This letter will include your unique lottery code. Lottery process. We use a lottery system to create a list of all completed applications. Your unique lottery code is entered into the lottery. These codes are randomly ordered, and this becomes the initial waiting list for the property. All applicants on the list will receive a unique confirmation letter telling them their initial waiting list position. This list, using your unique codes, will also be published on our website. After the lottery, we will schedule screening appointments for the applicants in the top section of the list. These applicants will be notified of the date and time scheduled for the screening appointment. Applications received after the deadline for the lottery will be added to the end of the waiting list chronologically based on the date and time of their application. Screening process. When your application is near the top of the waiting list, Wayfinders will contact you to make a screening appointment. There are many important documents you will need to present during this appointment. Please be sure to get organized before your screening appointment. We will ask you to provide identification, like birth certificates, social security cards, and picture IDs. Income information, like benefit letters, pay stubs, employment offer letters, self-employment income verification, tax return documents, student financial aid, child support, alimony, or documents for any other income your household receives. Asset information, such as bank accounts, real estate information, whole life insurance, stocks, bonds, or prepaid debit cards. We also require five years of landlord history, and we perform a credit and background screening. We do not obtain your credit score, and it is not a hard inquiry on your credit. We gather information about your credit accounts, public records, housing court, or criminal records. Once we have completed the screening process, you will be assigned a unit number, and the application packet will be submitted to the Wayfinders compliance department for approval. When you are approved by Wayfinders and you accept your new apartment, we'll let you know when you can move in. Please note that some units and new developments have rental subsidies attached to them. This means that if we determine you may qualify for one of these units, you will need to go through an additional screening. We'll reach out to you if that's the case and guide you through that process. After the screening, when all available units are filled, all remaining eligible applicants will stay on the waiting list based on their original placement in the lottery. If an applicant is offered an apartment but turns it down, that apartment will be offered to the next eligible applicant. We hope this video has helped you understand why it is important to complete your application and informed you about the selection process for an apartment in this development.
So that was the, um, you know, a, a video that, uh, the residents or, or the, uh, the applicants are able to watch, in, as, you know, as part of the, um, application process and, um, and then the other topic that we were going to discuss this evening was, uh, local preference. So the executive office of housing.
Well, let's do the, I want to talk about that, but let's talk about the selection process first and then I know this plays into it, but let's talk, go through the process first. In case anybody has questions, Mr. Gruber, is that all right? So can you push your first, your first, um, screen up and that would be, that material wasn't, I, I couldn't find that material in the application. Can you send it to the staff and they can just, uh, send that to us electronically at, uh, some later point, in case we need to go back and look at it?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be helpful. All right, so who do you? Affirmative marketing begins. That's where you, you, you work with other agencies, um, organizations to try to identify people that are least likely to apply. Is that correct?
Yeah. Could I jump in, Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Amanda Bubon here, uh, vice president of compliance for Wayfinders, uh, from seventeen eighty Main Street, Springfield's. Um, so affirmative marketing is, uh, part, eh, part of the original application for funding and everything like that. We have to develop a tenant selection plan and an affirmative marketing plan. So the affirmative marketing plan comes from evaluating the census tract data for the demographics for the town and then for the county and then for the state. Through that, we determine what populations of, of, uh, minorities are least likely to be applying in the town, right? And then you have to, uh, you have to target those groups in the affirmative marketing. So when we do that analysis, if we can see that maybe the percentage of Hispanics in the county is much higher than the percentage of Hispanics in the town, we would know that to get more Hispanics in the town, we would have to target by going out to Spanish publications, newspapers, radio stations to market to that specific population to try to diversify the property. Um, so we do that analysis and then we identify which groups of, um, people are least likely to apply based on what percentage there is, and that's how we determine, um, what groups we're going to market to. And then from there, we identify which newspapers or, you know, websites or community, uh, groups that are out there that, uh, service that might, that, uh, demographic. Um, and we, and we'll mark it there. So we'll put the print ads out, we'll put the radio ads out. Um, we'll send out flyers and pack application packets to those community contacts.
And do you do that yourself or are you working with other groups as well in the, in the various communities?
Uh, we mostly, we're, we're solely responsible to ensure that it happens and to be in compliance with it. So like, we do work with other organizations, we'll reach out, you know, for accessible units to, you know, disability groups or to, you know, um, uh, Department of Mental Health, if we're targeting, like, it's, it all depends on what we're targeting, who we're going to go out and reach out to, but we do that work mostly ourselves. We do all the advertising.
All right. And then you hold information sessions, correct?
Yeah, I think David has a question maybe before we.
Yes, Mr. Slowbetter.
I do. I don't know if I'm the only one who doesn't get this. On the seven-month line, is that a typo? Should it be least likely to apply or?
Yeah.
What is least, what is a least likely?
It's at least with a T, with a T.
Oh, that's supposed to be a T. So you want to reach people who are not likely to apply under, under normal circumstances.
Correct, yes. And the timeline for all of this comes from HLC directly. EO HLC has set timelines for, if you're anticipating to get certificates of occupancy for the buildings at this day, you have to start. So the affirmative marketing comes first. We target those groups, we market to them for thirty days prior to like just general marketing everywhere else.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and Ms. Bubon, they, you determine who are the least likely to apply by looking at the population in the town as compared to the, the county and the state, is that right? Or do you, is there some other way that you judge whether some group is least likely to apply?
Yeah, that's correct. It's an analysis based on the most recent census tract data. There's actually like a HUD form for this. And it's a very, it's a very specific process. There's charts we have to fill out, uh, backup that we have to provide, um, and things like that to demonstrate what's the, what the percentages are. Yeah.
Any question, other board members who have questions about the, the marketing prior to construction?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Henry.
Oh, thank you.
I, I thought Mr. White had his hand up, sorry.
Yeah. So I, I believe I heard, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Gruber said that there may be an informational session, one in Spanish. Um, and I think I learned this last week that I believe the town has translation services that's not just limited to Spanish. So I'm not sure if this is something that you guys may want to look into and see if there's opportunity to broaden that language barrier to something other than just Spanish. I believe every department in the town, I was told, has like instant translations for languages other than, um, Spanish. So, so I'll put that out there. And my, my second question, um, so I, I glanced at the application briefly and so I understand reaching out to people who are least likely to apply, um, but does, does that factor in people that, um, are, for lack of a better term, homeless? Um, because, um, one of the things that, um, I saw in the application was that you guys require five years of lease history or rental history. And some people may not have that because they would have either been living with family because they couldn't afford their own place or recently lost their home. Um, how do you guys navigate that? And what do you guys do with those kind of situations?
Yeah, so, um, in general, with the landlord history, uh, we know that there's going to be some folks out there that just don't have landlord history. They may be in shelter placements, they may be bouncing around, they may be homeless. They may be freshly eighteen and lived with their parents their whole lives. Um, you know, so if, if a applicant can't provide the five years of landlord history, we move to personal letters of recommendation. Um, we'll accept three letters of references in lieu of landlord history. Uh, we don't accept from friends or family. It has to be like community contacts or colleagues or supervisors or, you know, some type of, uh, relationship that you have besides this is my best friend or this is my sister or my child um, that will vouch for your character, your reliability, that kind of thing. So we do give them alternative means of, of, you know, showing their history of where they're at. We do actually the same thing with credit. Um, to be honest, we include a section on our applications and screening where people can provide personal credit references in addition to just the credit reports that we run. So if they have things like car insurance that they've had for years that they've always paid in time, or they buy things through like rent a center that they're paying on time every month, we'll take that as well to show that they're going to be reliable in making their payments and, and fulfilling their financial obligations if their credit history isn't long enough or there isn't any, or if it's not so great. Um, so we try to really work with people to get them housed. Um, and, and also typically, uh, most of our new developments include some units that have homeless preference. So, uh, those applicants would be screened first for those units prior to applicants that are already in secure housing.
Thank you. And, 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 and within that category, there's, I, I also saw that there is, um, a, a criminal background check as well. And so are, are there certain things that would disqualify a person based on prior history with the law? Um, I, I know this is state-funded, town-funded, and, um, I, I saw one about, um, SORB, um, on there, a big question about SORB. Um, are, are there, are there certain things on a person's quarry that would automatically disqualify them?
So, uh, for, for us, we don't run quarries, uh, we don't, we don't have that authorization to run actual.
Not quarry, like a court, like a.
Yeah.
Background check.
Yeah, so we use a screening software tool, uh, it's called First Advantage Safe Rent Core Logic. It has, goes by different names. It runs, it does pull criminal history. Um, if they have like arrest records and things like that, but not to the extent of a quarry. Um, it does do a multi-state sex offender registry search, and we follow the program regulations for those things. So certain programs have, uh, certain restrictions for that. Like if it's a project-based subsidy, um, they have a restriction where you cannot receive subsidy if you have a lifetime sex offender registry requirement. Um, uh, and then with, with the subsidies also, they have much more, uh, clear-cut guidelines on, um, the amount of arrests you've had, if you've had felony convictions or misdemeanors of this type within this many years. Uh, we don't really have that in-depth of a screening because we don't do quarries. Um, we just use that background tool, so it will alert us if there's things going on so that we could be mindful of them. Uh, but we also have to be really careful because, uh, you know, there is, there is a detrimental effect on, on people statistically sometimes that creates kind of like fair housing issues, right? Because statistically, this demographic of people may be more likely to have criminal history. So HUD has issued a lot of guidance about that over the past, uh, probably five to seven years on how to really screen to find good quality people that can follow the rules, pay the rent, and, um, and be compliant without causing a disparate impact on those groups that may be more likely to have that kind of history.
Okay, thank you. And, um, so I, I think my, the other part that I heard was it's town, county, and state. So if I understood correctly, if we, in, in thinking about, um, the application process for, um, your screening, if you don't have enough applicants, say, in Amherst, then you will widen that to a countywide and then state if necessary.
For advertising?
For the, for the census tract, yeah.
Yeah, no, so the, the census tract, so that when we're preparing an affirmative marketing plan, it's a very specific HUD form, um, that you have to fill out. So you just fill out all the blanks. And when you get to that chart that has to do with the census tract, you have to run the local census tract. And then there's a column for this is the immediate area, this is the expanded area, this is the, the state. So you put the numbers in each column from the census tract data into that sheet. And then when you see which of the local, it's basically like what, what Amherst numbers are. what, what Amherst numbers are in comparison to the county, to the state. And if Amherst numbers are lesser than the county or the state in that category, we would effectively include those, that category in our affirmative marketing.
Thank you.
So can I just follow up on one of Mr. Henry's questions? So you said that there are criteria that you have to follow, it sounds like from federal law, about what, um, the number or the types of criminal convictions that disqualify people. But you don't know what those are or or is, is that something that, that, uh, is determined by the, by the federal government when you look for a subsidy? How, how does that work? Cause I, I think your concern that you expressed is a really good one. And about the disparate effect on various populations. And I, I want to make sure, I, I just want to understand it better because I don't want to further that disparate effect.
Yeah, so we internally at Wayfinders do not have a set protocol that we're gonna decline someone if they have X, Y, or Z in their history. Um, we just, we don't do that. We don't do quarries, um, you know. Yeah, like we certainly. Uh, so a quarry is a criminal offense record inquiry through the mass Department of Justice. It's like a, you're inquiring for their criminal history and their full record of arrests and everything like that. Um, the subsidy programs absolutely do that because there's very strict federal guidelines about subsidy and, and those types of offenses and things like that. We, at Wayfinders, we don't process them that way. So, I mean, for lack of a better way to say it, like everybody has a chance in our eyes, like, you know, everybody has an opportunity to change, everyone has an opportunity to have a second chance in life, to have a good, secure place to live where they can thrive and not just survive and, and stuff like that. So we don't have a set decline for criminal history. It usually comes from the subsidy department for the subsidized units that they can't approve them for that subsidy.
So that's for your thirty percent units, thirty percent of area meeting income. That's the group that would be most likely to be, somebody might be, uh, rejected at the federal level because of some, some history. You're not, you don't make that decision. The subsidizing agency makes that decision, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
For the thirty percent or is that for the fifty, sixty and eighty percent as well?
The, the fifty, sixty and eighty percent units would pass our, you know, they would go through our, our screening. Um, some of them may have also been through that same screening because they come with mobile vouchers, mobile Section Eight or MRVP vouchers or there's so many different mobile vouchers out there now.
Done before they arrived to you.
They would, yeah, they would get it. So, uh, typically the only people who wouldn't go through kind of that vetting process would be someone coming in that is eligible based on the income limit for the unit that can afford to pay the rent for the unit that doesn't have any type of subsidy involved at all.
Okay. Alright. Other questions regarding the, the marketing? So the next question I have is, seems to me you're gonna have five buckets, five lotteries, is that right? You'll have a lottery for the thirty percent, a lottery for the fifty, the sixty, the eighty and, and the market rate, or how does that work?
So, um, there's actually just, w- well, there would be two lotteries here because there's a local preference and then there's, there's non-local preference, right? So when we do, we don't run a separate lottery for each bedroom size or each income level. Um, all of the applicants get a lottery code, all of the codes enter the lottery, all of the codes come out of the lottery. Um, and that becomes the general list with all of the codes. When there's a local preference, the applicants who have local preference, their codes get entered into a local preference pool. And we run a lottery on the local preference and they have an order for local preference. Those applicants that have local preference are also included in the general pool. Um, and the general pool becomes the waiting list after all the units are filled. So local preference applies only at lease-up. So we have to do two lotteries, one for local preference and one for the general pool. And then when we're going to fill units, you know, we have the list and the order based on the lottery. So if I know I have to fill five two-bedroom sixty percent units, I'm gonna start at the top and then sort down until I find the first, you know, twenty or so applicants that meet the eligibility criteria that can afford to pay the rent and then we'll invite them in for screening. If that makes sense. Yeah, but they all go in the same, they're all on the same list, yeah.
They're all on the same list and so I've got lot, for lack of a better term, lottery number one and lottery number two. Alright, my two applicants, that's their lottery numbers. Um, and the first, the one is a, wants a one-bedroom and qualifies, the second one, then the second one wants a two-bedroom and qualifies. In effect, they both go to the head of the, the pack for that, um, type of unit. So you have, you don't have, you don't break it out by, we'd have to also break it out by, um, thirty, by fifty, sixty and eighty percent, right, and market rates. So you have, you, you got a really complicated.
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot that goes into it.
Selection process once you start the process, but you have everybody in the same pool and then you start filtering them out based on both income and, and, um, uh, size of unit, correct?
Yep, yep.
And the first kind of, you have a seventy percent local preference, those are filled first. And then those people who don't meet that preference or, uh, local preference people who didn't make it, weren't, weren't awarded a unit are put into the second pool and you start the process for the remaining units with that second pool. Is that correct?
Uh, not exactly. I know it's really complicated, so, um, and we haven't gotten to local preference, but it's gonna come up here anyway, so we could talk about it. So, um, so with local preference, the, the units are already designated before we even have the lottery. So if there's a seventy percent local preference and we know that we need to have X amount of one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms set aside for local preference, we already designate those units as local preference units. And then the other units are just general u- units, right? So we have the local lottery pool, local preference lottery pool with that order. And then we have the general lottery pool where everybody's included, even the local people. So you could have a local applicant that could be like number two hundred on the local preference list and number two on the general list, right, when they come out of the lottery because they have both opportunities. When we are going to screen for a local unit, which we know is a local preference unit because they're already designated at advance, we, we pull from the local preference pool to fill those units until we've screened all potential applicants that may qualify. If we go through the entire list of local preference applicants and we don't have a local preference to put into that local preference unit, then we'll put a general, a general pool applicant into that, into that unit. Um, when we're going to fill the general pool units, because we know which ones they are, they're already preset ahead of time, we just go down the list, down the general list. So it's, it does happen, we've, we've seen it with the lease-up we're working now, where we have a local applicant going into a general preference unit, not a local preference unit because they were high up on the general list, but down low on the local preference list. So they're not going into a local preference unit, but they're still gonna get a unit during the initial lease-up because of that general pool. So that's, it's kind of like the different unit types. If it's local preference, we're pulling from the local pool until we've exhausted all of the local preference applicants. If it's a general unit, we start, we, we fill from the general pool.
That's helpful.
Yeah, and then, you know, preferences come into play. So if there's certain preferences, right? You have to skip down till you find the person that matches that preference. So, uh, a big example of that is accessible units, units that are wheelchair accessible. Number two thousand could be the first person out of the lottery that needs that, those features, right? So that we skip way down to them because that's who needs the features for a sensory unit, for a wheelchair accessible unit. Um, if there's other requirements like, you know, DMH referrals for FCF, uh, unit types, like, you know, we have to go down till we get to those, those eligible people.
Okay. Great. Ms. Williams, can you put that, or is it, Mr. Gruber, can you put the, uh, screen back up or the PowerPoint back up? We can work through that again and then we can go on to local preference. Who has that? Alright.
Hang on one second.
Great. And the last question I have is when you do your information sessions, are they, I suspect they're more than, they're done in more places than just in the town. You'll go out, depending upon what you find out from the census tract analysis, you'll go beyond just Amherst and go to other, have information sessions in other towns, is that correct?
Um, no, so the information sessions we actually hold Zoom webinars for. So it's, it's, uh, you know, public information across the whole state. It's not just advertised in the town or in the county or anything like that.
So it's, so it's all Zoom?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah. It's, it's not easy. Um, but we did, we do live, we do live Zoom webinars. Uh, we advertise, we let all of the applicants know. Um, anybody who's, you know, filled out an interest form gets emails with links and things like that so that they can join in. We also record them and then we post them to the website afterwards so that if someone didn't have an opportunity to join during the live webinar, um, they can watch the video back later. Uh, we also do, um, we have one session during the, uh, during the day, during a weekday. And then we have one session during the weekday in the evening hours. And then we do one weekend, like a Saturday afternoon session. So we hold three information sessions. Um, and we try to, uh, we typically do one, one of the sessions i- in both English and Spanish where we present the entire information session in English and then we present the entire information session in Spanish as well so that that gets recorded and it's available. Uh, we do Spanish just generally, it's the, uh, biggest language that we have requests for translations for. So it's kind of an automatic thing for us at Wayfinders to translate, um, documents into that language automatically. Um, I will take, uh, Mr. Henry's advice though and look into the possibility of other languages, uh, with translation services and stuff like that. Um, but that's, yeah, we just do, we used to have them in person. Um, and then when we did a couple lease-ups during COVID, we moved to Zoom. Uh, the majority, I don't, I don't think any management companies are doing in-person info sessions anymore or lotteries. Uh, it's all online, um, usually through a Zoom webinar.
Yeah, so my only, this is for my information, so I can understand it, but my concern would, my concern would be that there are some populations that are le- less likely to be, um, eh, to, to use Zoom than other populations. And I would guess that you've done this, you've had this policy for a while. Have you seen, um, less? Have you seen people, groups are not as likely to participate than they did in-person sessions? It's, I'm just worried that you have very low-income people who don't have a computer or don't, who aren't digitally connected as much.
Yeah.
And, um, I wonder what your experience has been in terms of reaching out as broadly as possible and if going to digital has reduced the diversity of people you would normally see in a in-person session? Just for our information.
Um, I wouldn't say that. I would say our attendance has drastically increased by going to the Zoom webinar format. We had a few hundred people joining each of our information sessions in the lottery, uh, like two, two hundred or so people. Um, the largest in-person info session I've done in the ten years I've been here, I think we might have had fifteen people at it. Um, and, and sometimes people don't show up at all and we just sit there for the hour and a half and, and then we leave. Um, with the Zoom webinars, it's definitely increased the attendance tremendously. Um, we do, you know, if we, we looked into with our last one, the possibility of renting a, a, a local space in the town and then setting up so that people could watch the Zoom webinar from there. Uh, but it didn't end up panning out, but we still had really great attendance. We've had, uh, you know, we had people with the transcripts turned on because they were, you know, hard of hearing or, or deaf. Um, we were able to offer it in Spanish and English, uh, which definitely helped quite a bit of people out. Um, we do get, like, we do provide a dedicated email and a dedicated phone number for on all of our marketing material for people to reach out if they have any questions, if they have any concerns, if they don't just know. Um, and, and for those who maybe weren't able to join the info session or sometimes they join and they, they weren't there the whole time or they missed a piece and they have more questions, we do a whole lot of, uh, education individually with people as they call, as they stop in, um, and as they email us, we'll have those conversations directly with, with folks. And we provide assistance with, you know, filling out the application if it's something they struggle with. Um, but yeah, it's, you know, the, the wave of the future, I guess. Everything is all, you know, electronic and things like that, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Slaveter.
I don't have a real good sense of the scale of this. You're going to be building about a hundred, ten, hundred and fifteen units. How many applicants do you expect to get for that number of units? How many applications?
Well, uh, we're in the process of filling sixty-two units in Agawam right now. We're opening there, uh, any day we'll have possession of the buildings. We had two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight applications for those sixty-two units.
Wow.
Yeah, so I, I anticipate a lot. It's only.
You anticipate at least more, you anticipate two thousand or more?
I, I would be surprised if we didn't get that many, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Our last one prior to this. Oh, Jamie, when did we do library commons? Like three, four years ago, maybe? Uh, and we had about seventeen hundred applicants for those, uh, for that development in Holyoke. So we were anticipating getting a lot, uh, for our last one. And when we were over twenty-four hundred, I was a little bit surprised, but not at all. I mean, the, the need for affordable housing in the state is profound. It's absolutely profound. And unfortunately, we can't help them all. Uh, the majority of our applications come through, they, they're looking for subsidies, you know, they, they need subsidies. They, they're eligible, they make under the income limit, but their rent is not affordable to them without a subsidy, so. Yeah, it's, the numbers are huge.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Alright, other questions on this first slide? Mr. Gruber, if there's not, we can go on to the next slide. I mean, I think we've touched on a lot of these topics, but this is a good, um, um, reminder of the things that they, that Mr. Gruber discussed. Alright, next slide, any questions on, uh, let's go to the next slide, sample flyer. It is what it is. The next slide. We don't need to see the video again. Alright, be- before we move on to local preference itself, are there any other questions on the application selection process? Okay, let's talk about local preference.
Jamie, you're on mute.
Yeah, you're muted.
Thank you. The, the screen that I'm sharing keeps covering my, uh, my Zoom, um, control bar. So that's why I was, I was, it was kind of popping on and off to try to remedy that problem, but that's, um, so you can hear me now though, correct?
Yes.
Alright, perfect. Great. Um, so the, um, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities or EO HLC, as, uh, as part of their qualified allocation plan, they'll, they'll typically um, state in there that they may allow up to seventy percent of, uh, local preference, um, at initial lease-up for, um, for tax credit, uh, de- development such as this. And, um, as part of our, you know, our application there, we'll just, we'll show that there's a need for local preference and, um, and just, you know, ensure that it does not, you know, doesn't violate any sort of applicable fair housing laws. But that's, um, the maximum that we would be able to, uh, apply. But that's the maximum that we would be able to apply for in our funding application. And Wayfinders is, you know, willing to, you know, go through the, take the measures and the steps to apply for that, so.
Okay. Can you show us, can you show us the local, the local preference qualifications? Do you have, I think there was a, a piece of paper I saw that listed what qualifies for local preference? Residency, job, school, just run, do you have a chart of that?
Yeah, let me see if I can, if I can find, find that here.
And while, and, and while you look for that, is it 70% of the entire units or 70% of a certain amount of units?
It, it would be 70% of the total units on the property.
So you wouldn't be 70% of 30%, 70% of 50%, 70%, 60% for, so you have to have a total. So you could have 60% of one group and 80% of another group.
Um, it's, it's usually spread out pretty equitably. So it's spread out over a variety of income levels and apartment sizes, including, you know, if there were market units, there, some market units would be included, some 80% units. So like our most recent one, we had the same thing, a 70% local preference. So of the 62 units, 43 of them are designated as having local preference and there are project-based subsidized units. There are 60% tax credit units, there's 80% workforce units, and there's market units included in that local preference designation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Erlich, do you have something? Just identify yourself for the record and.
Yes, I'm Bruce Erlich. I'm Senior Vice President for Real Estate Development at Wayfinders. And I'm grateful that I've been able to finally come into the meeting. I've been listening. Yeah, one thing. I want to just clarify about what Amanda said. Amanda, you can correct me. Amanda's the expert, but, but I just want to add another sort of layer on that. So a maximum, so when we say 70%, that is the most that EOHLC will approve. There is no automatic approval that you can get 70% local preference. If we submit a request or when we submit a request to EOHLC for local preference, they will review it and make the determination of what's available. It's part of their overall fair housing review. You know, it's kind of connected to the affirmative fair marketing plan. So we, we make proposals, they, they judge, and they're administering both state and local laws. So, and that's local, they're administering both federal and state kind of fair housing laws and policies. So, you know, they, they've, they've got both hats of state and, and a federal implementer. But here's the clarification. A maximum of 70% of the units could be local preference.
Right.
So let's say for simple math, we've got 100 units as the denominator. So up to 70% of 70 units could be local preference. Some units cannot have any local preference, okay, because of other laws, like Section 8 units. Amanda, you can stop me when I'm wrong. Section 8 units, MRVP units, units set aside for people who are clients of the Department of Mental Health or other priority populations that have targeted resources. So it's possible that those, is Amanda, am I on the right track here as this clarification here?
Yeah. So I mean, the local preference can overlap certain programming. Um, it's not, it's not like a overlapping home with something else, right? That's a little different.
So I guess another way to think about that is though there's a 70-unit maximum in this 100-unit property, if 40 of the units could be sort of excluded from local preference because there's other restrictions, you know, then there would be only a maximum of 60 that are actually available for local preference. So, you know, the local preference allowance does not override other state or federal policies that target units and that, that, that don't allow local preference.
And in that scenario, then it would be 70% of that 60?
No, it would be 70% of the total number of units. So we're still, 70%, 70 units is still the maximum. It's just that that's off of the 100, but it may be now. So let me give another example to illustrate. So if, let's say only 20 units are in this special category that you can out of local preference. So there's a maximum of, there's 80 units that are theoretically available for local preference, but you would only be allowed to do 70 because 70 out of 100, 70 out of 100%. If the number dropped down to 60 units that are available theoretically for local preference, then 100% of those 60 units would be available for local preference, you know. Or to hit the target on the head, if 70 units are available for local preference and that was it, 100% of them could be available. Amanda, did I get that right?
Yeah, that's a better.
70% only applies to those units that don't have, don't already have some overriding limitation on local preference, like federal prohibition on the local presence, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So 70% applies to, in this case, if that's what, you know, what we choose, 70% applies to that universe that is not governed by a federal or state law that prohibits local preference.
Well, no, not exactly. The 70% applies, the 70% applies to the 78 units, which is the denominator, okay?
Yeah.
70% of 78 is the maximum number.
Where do we get 78?
We've 78.
Get 78 units in the development.
78 units in the development.
Oh, I thought it was 100. Okay.
I was using 100 only as a hypothetical because math is easier.
All right.
Now I'm going to get to the fact, the fact. Mr. Judge, you were making me doubt my, my.
You, you, you as well for me.
Yeah, okay. No, so it's a 78-unit project, up to 70% of those are available. It's just that some units may not be.
Right.
You know, they're not excluded from the 70% calculation. They're just excluded from local preference. Hmm. We, we, we should have another graphic for that.
Yeah, we should have a graphic, but I, let's, and that'd be helpful. But what I take away from this is that there are units which will not permit, to which local preference will not apply. Right? There are units out of your 78, there are units that will not apply because of the federal subsidy or some other, or state regulation. And that the, those, there may be 70, 70% of the 78 units that local pref, that we could potentially use, but if 20 of those 78 units don't have, are, there's not allowed, local preference is not allowed to apply to those because of federal rules, then the, the rest of the units are, are local preference eligible? Or 70% of the rest of the units are local, local preference eligible? Which, do you understand my question? You got 78 units, 20 of them are restricted from local preference. You're left with 58 units. Can those, is it 70% of the 58 or is it all 58 that local preference applies to?
Local preference would apply to all 58.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
We don't, I don't need another chart then.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it would be up to 70%, right? Like we can propose and, and send HLC all the data to demonstrate a need within the town, because that's really what happens. You have to demonstrate the need within the town for the local preference. And then they'll tell us, we're going to give you 40% local preference or 50% or 60%. So they'll, they'll tell us what percentage of local preference that they're going to assign for us.
Got it. Good.
And we do have, I, I do, I, I don't know if, if Jamie shared it, but we do have a local preference election sheet that we attach with the applications. That kind of walks through the, yeah, the criteria, what qualifies somebody for, for local preference.
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, and this was the last.
Yeah.
So we have the current residents, municipal employees, employees of a business located in the town or households with children attending public schools.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I've dominated, I didn't mean to, but I've dominated the questions. I want to make sure that other members of the board have an opportunity to ask questions on local preference if they wish. Okay. Anything else on local preference from Amanda or from either Ms. Buban or Mr. Erlich? Shagur? Okay. All right. There's no further questions on local preference. Let's go to the follow-up for what subject matters from the last meeting. If I recall, the first thing that we talked about from the last meeting is the rental application. We received that. Mr. Henry, you had, you had requested to see that. Do you have some questions regarding the application?
I think I did ask some questions. Mr. Chair, thank you. After reviewing the application in earlier, in our discussion tonight, so thank you.
Okay. The second item was a comparison of inspections from state and other kinds. So the goal here was to take the other inspections, this, this deals with whether this property would be subject to the rental registration inspections in Amherst. And the goal of this exercise was to take the Amherst inspection process and contrast that with the other inspection processes from, processes from other agencies that apply to this project. Are you still work, are you guys still working on that? We don't have anything from you on that yet.
Um, well, so we, we had a, we had a meeting with the, the building commissioner and the, the planning staff to just discuss some of the information on the inspections and clarify the, the regulations, you know, with our, with our team. And following that conversation, we found that there are provisions actually in the bylaw to kind of waive the inspections in, in sort of a real-time manner for other buildings that are subject to inspections. So at the time of when an inspection may be required on one of these properties, we'd be able to submit those forms if, you know, if they were, you know, equivalent for the, the building commissioner, you know, review and, and that sort of thing. So following that conversation, you know, we, we determined from our team that we would withdraw our request for a waiver from that and from the, the rental bylaw or the, or the fees.
Okay. All right. Mr. Meadows had a question about the length of runs from the VRF to the terminal units. Ken?
Yeah, our mechanical engineer, our mechanical engineer, we had asked for that information and they are looking into it. It wasn't something that they had readily available, the exact, you know, lengths of each, each run. So we're working on that with them.
Is that something that you can have available in our next meeting, which is in two weeks? Do you think your, your engineering staff would have it available then?
I, I think that if, if there's a, if there's sort of a, a root to the, to the question that they may be able to answer, they may not have all the exact numbers. What I was told from our engineering staff is that, that they would typically have those exact numbers later on in the construction drawing process. We're still, you know, developing our, our drawings to a certain level and they, they will be working on those eventually, you know. And I know that the architect had asked, could we give sort of, you know, more general numbers as to what we anticipate them to be? And Mr. Meadows was, was, was clear that he wanted the exact number. So that's something that we'll need to work on and I'll have to get a, you know, keep following up with them for a response.
All right. Well, I guess we'll wait until you have that ready. Mr. Meadows, what's your response to that? You're muted, Craig. You're muted, Mr. Meadows.
I would like to see them and the, the reason for that is that, that there are limits with the VRF as to the length of runs that you can have and some of those runs look longer than that to me. On the plans that we had, I wanted to just make sure that you're not going to exceed the, the limits that are available for a VRF.
Would it be acceptable to have the engineers confirm that?
No. I want to have my engineers confirm it.
All right. So that's something that we'll need to get as soon as we can. All right. The next, Mr. Malloy, I see your hands up.
Sure, thanks. I guess my question would be if we knew the maximum length on each site of the run, is that acceptable? I mean, to me, this is really detailed and so although not prescribed by code, you know, all these line sets will be interior, they will be inspected. And so, you know, if the engineer can say the longest run on Melchottown Road is whatever it is and the longest run on Southeast Street is what it is, is that good? We know that the, the rest would be less than that. I just, I think this is really detailed. Typically.
You're, you're breaking up, Mr. Meadows, but you're.
I, I, I think you heard what I wanted.
Okay. All right. The next was to speak to neighboring properties about less light trespass. Did you have an opportunity to do that? And what's the, the upshot?
Right. So we're working with the architect and the photometric plan to hone in the design. They're still working on that and updating it. And at that point, we will, you know, discuss that with the, with the neighbor at the, at the property. But they're up, they're looking at some alternative options to, you know, reduce that even further.
Okay. So that's still to come. All right.
Yes.
And number five was clarification of the variation in light candles or foot, is it light candles or foot candles? I'm not sure. In various spaces on the, on the ground and why they vary so much.
Yes, it's, it's, it's foot candles and they're still, they're, that, that same, that same vendor is still working on it as well.
Okay.
And that's yet to come.
All right. So then for outstanding, Ms. Williams, for our outstanding items, we've resolved number one. We've got the application that we resolved number two, three, four, and five still remain on our list of, of information to receive.
Copy that.
Okay. All right. Before we move on to waivers and sort of an explanation of waivers and the first blush consideration of a waiver request, I want to provide this opportunity for board members to add any, ask any questions on matters that we've gone through and about anything before we move to waivers. So anything we presented before or tonight?
I, I have a follow-up to the local preference. So I, I understand that, I understand the math and the qualifications. And given what you said, that your last project had significantly greater applicants than units. And I imagine Amherst will also. But what happens if we don't have those local preference residents applying for these units? How do you treat those that were essentially adopted for local preference? If you don't have the numbers to fill those?
Yeah. So if we were trying to fill a local preference unit, we didn't have any local preference applicants that met the criteria to be eligible and affordable for that, we would fill it with a general pool applicant. So it would go to just an applicant from the, the list. Remember, because we. Uh, remember, because we have the two different lists, right? We do a local lottery, and then we do a general lottery. All local applicants are also included in the general lottery with general applicants. So if we're gonna fill a unit that's designated local preference, we're gonna go to the local preference lottery list first, screen anyone from there that may be potentially eligible, before that unit would be offered to some of from the general list. So it does happen, it does happen sometimes, you know, uh, like we have some three-bedroom eighty percent units that we don't have maybe a local applicant for, or something like that, and we would have to go to the general pool for that. And the, the local preference is at lease-up only, so it's just on the initial filling of the development. Once all of the units are filled, uh, the general list, the general lottery list is what becomes the initial waiting list. So people keep their lottery placement, and that's their number on the waiting list, um, for the units for ongoing filling, for vacancy and turnover.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mister Chair. Are, excuse me, are students at UMass eligible to apply for units in these buildings?
So, uh, there are student status requirements, uh, mostly under the local housing tax credit program, uh, where there's restrictions in place. Um, so it's not that a student couldn't apply, or that a student may, may or not be eligible. Um, but there's prohibitions under the local income housing tax credit program that prohibits renting to households that consist of all full-time students. So if you have three or four household members, every single one of them is a full-time student. Uh, there's a, a prohibition against that unless they meet a certain exception criteria. There are exceptions to that rule, um, such as, uh, if it's a, a single parent with dependent children, and they're all full-time students, they would be accepted from that. They, they would be allowed to have a, a, uh, all full-time student households. If it's a married couple, and they file a joint return, and they're both full-time students, that's another one of the exceptions that's allowed for us to rent. It's, the, the full-time student status rule is really designed to prevent dormitory-style housing and affordable programs, is what it is, so. Uh, even if we've had single individuals that were full-time students, if they're former foster childs, uh, former, uh, under former care of the state, they're exempted too from that rule, uh, to try to, you know, help them out in that regard.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I, and I read your lease, there are restrictions in the lease, you have to certify, you have to certify to that in your lease, correct? To those, that you meet those requirements?
Yeah, yes, there is language in the lease document about that tax credit regulation. Um, that if, you know, they may move, move in and be initially eligible, and then later on during their tenancy, where we have to recertify their income and assets and their household composition annually. And, uh, sometimes they decide to go to school full-time, and they become ineligible at that point, and then once their current lease term is, is expired prior to their next annual recertification, they have to vacate, they have to vacate the unit if they don't meet one of the exceptions.
Okay. Mister White.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Excuse me. Um, so this is gonna sound a little odd to begin with, I apologize, roll with me. Uh, but I myself, uh, spent approximately one year living on the streets as an unsheltered individual. Um, this is something that I'm very passionate about, very knowledgeable about having gone through it firsthand, and I applaud you guys for applying such a high percentage, uh, to the thirty percent AMI marker. My, the reason why I mentioned, uh, my kind of personal struggles, obviously well over a decade ago with being an unsheltered person, is it teaches you things that you just can't know if you hadn't lived through that. Uh, presents lists of obstacles that normal people just would never even think. So lots of times when people are trying to lend a hand, they're maybe not doing it in the most efficient way, or a way that's actually truly equitable. Uh, so to that point, when it comes to the laundry rooms, I know you guys discussed them a lot last week. Uh, one thing that really stuck out to me was it seems like there's a complete lack of coin service on the machines. Um, what you're presupposing in that is, I pulled up the statistics actually while I was watching the meeting. Ninety-seven percent of the United States, according to Pure Research, has, uh, phone, access to a cellular phone. Eighty-nine percent have a smartphone. When you're talking about this demographic, most of them are not gonna have a laptop, a tablet, a cellphone sitting around, their internet access is very limited, and I can fully understand that for the purposes of things like Zoom meetings and stuff like that, because I understand that you do have to operate with it costs. But in order to clean your clothes and to pay to clean your clothes, it's not like, you know, this is a free service. You're already presupposing that someone has a smartphone or internet access that's readily available. Um, I don't know that that's, have you spoken to the vendor to see if a coin operating machine might be possible?
Well, we do have cards, so in the laundry room, there will be a machine that they could put dollars into to get a card to use on the equipment. So there is a cash option, um, just not to put like quarters into the machines. Yeah, there, there's gonna be a, um, an option for them to buy, to get like a laundry card. They'll load the money, they could put the card in, load money onto it. Once they get a card, they could keep the card for their entire tenancy if they want to. Um, and, and they could load it that way, so there, there is that cash option too.
Okay, excellent, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's good. Alright, Mister Meadows.
Uh, I have a question, I think maybe more for Mister Malloy. Uh, I was getting my car inspected the other day, and I noticed um, the, the Belchertown Road site, and there's no crosswalk there. Is there going to be a crosswalk, and is there going to be a, a, a light for that crosswalk so that it can halt traffic going each way? And allow people who are, are crossing over to Colonial Village to catch the bus?
Yes, so the town is working on that section of Route Nine or Belchertown Road, and there will be a crosswalk with, you know, rapid flashing beacons that would bring you right to the, uh, you know, right where the curb cut is for Colonial Village and right to the bus stop. So from the site plan on Belchertown Road, you could walk out the front door, follow the walkway, which will lead right to the crosswalk, and then you can get to Colonial Village and the bus stops.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And Mister Malloy, that's one of those that you push the button and the lights flash, is that right?
Right, the one, yes, yeah, the ones that have like a yellow sign, and then the four rectangular lights, you know, facing each direction that flash, yes.
Like we have in Amity.
Yes.
Yep, okay, good. Great. Okay. No other questions, we'll move to, it's seven twenty-two. Um, we're gonna take our five-minute break right here, that's a good. Yes, Mister Gruber.
Oh, ju, um, yeah, just before we break, I'd like to address the, um, the waivers. Um, we are currently working on responses to the waivers that we received from the town staff that we plan to send back, um, to the town staff for their review prior to our next meeting, so discussing them tonight, it would be in sort of advance into that, we're not prepared to do so because we have comments that will go back to the town for their review. Um, and then we, we could discuss, that would be, um, how, how we would see this kind of, um, moving forward with the waiver, so we're not able to discuss them this evening.
Okay. Um, so you're, you're gonna submit the result of your conversations, which I was, I was unaware of. The result of your conversations with the town is that you might amend your waiver request beyond just the rental registration waiver, there's, we'll see different waivers in two weeks than we have before us now, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Then I don't think it makes, I'll listen to the board, but it doesn't make sense to go over these waivers if these waivers are gonna be different in two weeks. But I was unaware that you had conversations regarding the waivers and, um, and I, I wish I would have known, that then we wouldn't have planned to, I, I wouldn't have spent all afternoon reading the waivers. Okay, alright, that's good, alright. Um, board members, um, I don't know if there's anything else to discuss for this application then tonight, if we're not ready to do the waivers. And the way, it seems to me that it's a waste of our time to do something, to review something that's gonna be changed. So, um, Mister Malloy.
Yeah, sure, so staff reviewed them a while ago, sent them to Wayfinders. I will say that most of the waivers will remain. Uh, some of it was just, um, you know, clarification on what section of the zoning bylaw it's referring to, or listing out all the standards and conditions from the bylaw. You know, being more explicit in the language in terms of what is being asked to be waived, and so you know, there was a few sections we thought they might need to, um, request a waiver from that weren't included, but for the most part, you know, I think, you know, the waivers are there. Um, we, we thought we could eliminate a few, and so you know, I, I think your review is still worthwhile because most of that language is gonna remain even in the changes.
But we don't know which ones you're not gonna.
Right, right, no, no, I'm saying not to review tonight, but I think it was good to look at them, just, you know.
Great, yeah, alright. Good to know. Alright. There any other, um, comments regarding this application from the board members tonight? Anything else that the applicant wishes to say? Anything else from staff? If not, uh, I would entertain a motion that we continue this until.
Excuse me, Mister Chair?
Yes, Miss Murray.
Any, uh, public comment?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, yes. Um, if anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter, uh, they should do so by using the raise hand function on his, on his or her screen, or by pressing star nine on the phone. Um, do we have attendees who wish to speak?
No, Mister Chair, we do not.
Alright. So then we'll renew, I'll renew my willingness to entertain a motion to continue this hearing, uh, until November fourteenth, at which time it looks like we've got a, a half day for, a half meeting for Wayfinders and a half meeting for the Shrewsbury Solar, um, project on the fourteenth. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
And so I heard a move in a second, so the mo, any discussion? If not, the vote occurs in the motion to continue this till six o'clock on November fourteenth. If there's no discussion, the chair votes aye. Mister White?
Aye.
Mister Henry?
Aye.
Mister Meadows?
Aye.
Mister Slovater?
Aye.
Vote is five to nothing, uh, motion carries, and we'll see you all in, uh, on November fourteenth. Hopefully we'll be able to have, um, some of that information that Mister Meadows is interested in, as well as the other things on, um, um, light prop, the light trespass and the, uh, sort of the irregularities from our standpoint on the photo, photometric studies. Alright. Next order of business is, um, public comment on any matter not before our board tonight. So the public can comment on any matter not before us tonight. If you wish to comment, please use the raise hand function on Zoom, or press star nine on your phone. Miss Williams, I don't see any raised hands.
That is correct, there are no raised hands.
If not, the next order of business is, um, business not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours. Let's just run through the schedule, which is we normally do, Miss Williams. Um, seems to me that we've got a hearing on, next week on the twenty-fourth that deals with Th- Three Twenty-Eight College Street and Forty-Seven Red Gate Lane, and we have a full panel for that. I, I will be absent, but you have a full panel for that, correct?
That's correct. One moment, let me share my screen. But yes, that is correct. So the twenty-fourth, we have Three Twenty-Eight College Street and Forty-Seven Red Gate Lane.
Okay. Then we have meetings on, we have a half a meeting dedicated to Wayfinders on the fourteenth, and a half on, uh, Shrewsbury Solar. Is there any development on the extent to which we'll have, um, um, documents or presentation from Shrewsbury Solar?
At this time, I don't have any additional documentation. I think I have a few, um, comments from the public, but that's about it, and I think I can just give an update on WSP and where they are, but we don't have any additional documentation for Shrewsbury.
Okay, so if we don't have a lot, we, from Shrewsbury Road, we'll spend most of our time on Wayfinders then on the fourteenth. And then the next meeting before Thanksgiving is on the twenty-first. Okay. Alright, any other business from members of the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion to, um, adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
Moved in second. This is not debatable. The chair votes aye. Mister Slovater?
Aye.
Mister Meadows?
Aye.
Mister Henry?
Aye.
Mister White?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all, thank you for all your help.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Next meeting, bye-bye.